All right, good morning. I think we are live this morning. It is Tuesday, October 4th, 9:00 AM. I called the meeting of the Hutchinson City Council to order. Please call roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Inzkeep?
Here.
DeKant?
Dave Line?
Yeah, here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our prayer will be led by Pastor Kim Berry. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. Let us pray together. Sustaining God, our world is filled with chaos, debates, conflict, and tragedy. Thank you for being faithful and present to all people as you weave hope in the midst of despair. As a community, help us to work together to find solutions and do all that we can for the good of all. Direct our leaders and the meeting today. May wise decisions be made and may a spirit of cooperation prevail. All this we ask, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item.
Item four, a proclamation for disability employment awareness month.
If I could ask Roger Fritschmeyer to come to the podium. Roger will present this proclamation.
Good morning, Roger.
Good morning.
Glad to have you here again.
Glad to be here.
Always glad to have you. Let me present this proclamation to you, and I'll begin it. Whereas the recognition and protection of civil and human rights for all individuals rests at the core of our existence as a nation, and whereas the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act articulates and ensures the inalienable rights of people with disabilities, and whereas the American Association of People with Disabilities estimates that there are currently 56 million people with disabilities in the United States, and the unemployment rate among people with disabilities is 70 percent. Whereas efforts such as International Disability Mentoring Day seek to educate potential employees and employers concerning their, this untapped pool of skilled, talented, productive, and knowledgeable workforce, and whereas knowledge of disability concerns, issues, and rights serve to benefit our society as a whole by providing the foundation upon which understanding begins. And whereas October has been designated as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, now therefore I, John Dave Line, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2016 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in the City of Hutchinson and call upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities that affirm our determination to make the promise of equality and civil rights for all a reality. Roger, there's the proclamation and I'd like to hear from you.
All right. First of all, I want to thank the city for the proclamation. Pillar is again doing Disability Mentoring Day. It will be on October 19th, and I want to thank the city because the first person who volunteered to be a mentor when we started this program in 2002 was the city manager, Joe Palacio, and we have had a great relationship with the city ever since. This year, we're sending students to the fire department, to the animal shelter, to the water treatment plant, which I think would be pretty interesting, to city traffic, to the Hutch Police Department, and it gives them an opportunity to learn about what goes on with city government and what happens. You know, the things that happen at the city, they don't just happen. There are people that make it happen. So often for people with disabilities, we don't have the opportunities to learn about employment that people without disabilities have because finding our first job is really, really difficult, and finding those people who believe that we have capabilities is really difficult. We still are told so often that we can't do something, we shouldn't do something, yet our lives are going to be much better if we are able to find a job and if we can work. I want you to take just a second and think about how your life would be different if you didn't have the job that you had, and if you hadn't had the jobs that you previously had had. People with disabilities often are living on $733 a month. Think about how different your life would be, both because of the things that you can purchase and because of the social activities you would have to give up if that was the income that you lived on. So we believe that it's really, really important for students to learn about employment and students to develop that expectation that they should work. This year, we have 127 students that will be participating in the program, and we are sending them to various businesses, anything, from fast food to the city, to a cemetery is taking a student, so we're sending them all over the city of Hutch. And so I want to thank the city for their participation. I want to thank the community for their participation. I also want to invite any of the city council people to our breakfast on October 19th if they want to come, and it is at Emmanuel Lutheran Church, or to the reception in the afternoon at 1:45, to hear what the students learned and hear what they thought of Disability Mentoring Day. And then finally, on Thursday, we are having an event in front of Pillar. We have asked the community members this year to sponsor students to participate in Disability Mentoring Day for $25, and at that event on the 20th in front of Pillar during Thursday, we're going to draw for several prizes that we have had donated of those people who have sponsored students. So again, I want to thank you, and I want to encourage employers, when people with disabilities apply, give them a chance because oftentimes you'll find that if you give them a chance, you will find excellent employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Is that breakfast at 7:00?
It's at 8:30.
Oh, it's at 8:30.
Oh, smart people.
Talking Nancy's language.
As always, thank you, Roger, for your very inspiring words this morning and continued with your efforts. Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
All right, this says tradition, we set aside time on the agenda to invite anybody in the audience to come forth and make any comments on items that are not on the agenda, and if you would introduce yourself, your name and address if there are any comments. All right, being done, next item.
Item six, consent agenda.
I will move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second motion, the second. Please call roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item.
Item seven A, consider charter ordinance relating to the payment of costs of public improvements.
Good morning, Frank Edwards, Director of Finance for the city. The first thing before us is the revision to Charter Ordinance 46. The language in Charter Ordinance 46 was very specific and restricts the city to only certain types of improvements. We've worked around with the bond council that we have, and we've come up with a charter ordinance that's a little less restrictive, and it's actually modeled a bit after other communities, and so we are proposing an amendment to Charter 46 that you have in front of you as Charter Ordinance Number 50. A good example of what this could do that we were unable to do before is we're considering bonding a parking lot. We were unable to do that because of the language in Charter Order 46, and now this is a broader language that will allow us to do something like that. And so we would recommend your consideration and approval of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Counsel, have any questions? All right, entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the charter ordinance exempting the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, from the provisions of KSA 13-1024A relating to the payment of costs of public improvements in the city, providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject, and repealing Charter Ordinance Number 46 and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion's second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item.
Item seven B, consider ordinance amending ordinance number 2016-22 regarding general obligation bonds.
In the last council meeting, we had an ordinance sound resolution before you regarding the sale of the 2016 C bonds. If you recall, that was the one that we had a very favorable interest rate on. Our ship bond council came back this week and identified certain language that was a little problem with us in financing the fire station. And this particular ordinance includes statutory language that does allow us to conclude the bond sale, which is scheduled for October the 13th to close and fund those projects. So really, it's just adding a language in reference to KSA 12-1736 that was omitted from the prior ordinance. And we need to consider this ordinance, and then next we will look at a resolution as well.
Well, I appreciate the clarification, Mr. Edwards. Any questions of counsel? May I have a motion?
I would move to approve an ordinance amending ordinance number 2016-22 of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, to provide for the issuance and delivery of 2,165,000 principal amount of general obligation bond Series 2016 C of the city and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Second, motion's second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item.
Item seven C, consider resolution amending resolution number 2016 R32 regarding general obligation bonds.
This is really related to the ordinance. This is amending the resolution related to the 2016 C bonds, and in sequence, this resolution must be adopted after the ordinance was adopted, and it's the same thing. It adds the language that allows us to fund the fire station with the October 13th bond sale.
All right. Questions of counsel?
Yeah, would recommend.
Thank you.
Authorize.
Would entertain a motion?
Okay, I will move to approve a resolution amending resolution number 2016 R32 of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, to promote the, to provide for the form and details and authorization of the delivery of general obligation bonds, Series 2016 C of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Please call roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item eight A, consider rezoning request for property on East Blanchard Avenue.
Good morning, counsel. I'm Casey Jones, Senior Planner with the city, and let me, I have a handout here to give you, some pictures of the property we're going to talk about.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so the city received a rezoning petition from Mr. Keith Bauer, and he's in the audience today in the back row, if you have any questions for him later about this. He owns a property that he recently acquired. It's kind of at the southeast edge of the city, right against the city limits. It's a parcel of land that's about 27.9 acres in size, and currently, it's got two different zoning classifications on it. Part of it is Zone C4, which is the special commercial district, and then the other part of it is Zone TA, which is intended for more agricultural type uses. He's thinking about expanding his existing operations over to this site. He's the owner and operator of Sun Valley Trucking and has an LLC called KB Enterprises LLC, and this piece of land just presents a pretty good opportunity for development. This zoning petition is the first of several applications that will probably come before you, and it's the first approval that's required to get the property to be developed. So the other applications that we're working on right now with Mr. Bauer are a subdivision, as well as a parking variance, and actually, he just recently had a little piece of it annexed into the city. You probably recall that. Just a few weeks ago, that occurred. One of the pages in your packet there shows you the outlined in yellow, the area that he's proposing to develop, which is the area that's currently Zone C4, and he's asking to have the property rezoned to I2, which is an industrial classification, and to operate a trucking type business over there where he would have an office, he would have truck repair bays, and then his truck drivers, his employees, would have the ability to store their trucks over there, park them, and leave their personal vehicles there, too. So it'd be kind of a headquarters for his trucking business, potentially. I've included also in your packet there a conceptual site plan that hasn't yet been approved, but that would also eventually come before the city council for your review, should you approve the zoning petition, zoning change petition. As I said, it's still under review. The Planning Commission has reviewed the zoning amendment application, but they haven't yet taken a look at the subdivision or the site plan. There's several photos I've handed out. Nothing much there to see, really. When you look at the subject property, right now, it's just a big open field. But there is a property to the east of it that has kind of a similar use. At 1701 East Blanchard, there is a truck wash facility there, and they have quite a number of large semis parked on the property.
What's the MP designation?
MP stands for manufactured home park.
Oh, okay.
So there's kind of a mix of interesting businesses and uses in the area.
I've never seen that one, yeah. Are there notification requirements to those in the county that are near the property?
Yeah, we're required to notify everyone within the city limits within 200 feet and outside the city limits within 1,000 feet. And I think in this particular case, we just went ahead and we notified everybody within 1,000 feet, and I don't believe we had any comments. We had a few property owners call in, just questioning what was happening, wanted to know more about it, but no real concerns or issues. And then you can see, there's several photographs also that I handed out, just showing you Mr. Bauer's existing operations. He's got an existing site at 2201 South Lorraine, just to give you a concept of what his current business looks like and, you know, the number of trucks that he has there. So what you would see at this proposed site would probably be something similar to that in size. We did have a public hearing, September the 6th, of the Planning Commission, and they're recommending approval. They voted unanimously, nine to zero, to recommend approval of this request. Any questions for me about it? Any questions of the owner?
I wonder if we could invite Mr. Bauer up here, and Mr. Bauer, it seems like you have quite a growing enterprise within the community, and maybe you could tell us a little bit about your operations.
My name is Keith Bauer. I live at 931 North Wee State Road in Burton, Kansas. We currently are operating, we're running 50 trucks, and we have 125 trailers. We're operating out of our current facility. We're sitting on six acres right now, and as we continue to grow, we started off at our location with two mechanics, and we now have five mechanics, so we've just simply have outgrown our facility. So as we continue to move forward, we're looking to, our current shop right now is 100 by 50, and we're looking to build a shop that's going to be 130 by 200. So it'd be quite, you know, 26,000 square foot. It's going to have five, five drive-through bays, one with, for washouts, for, we can wash our trucks and wash out our trailers, and we're looking to add more mechanics there once we do that. There's a need for a repair shop here in town. There's nobody that really does it. We do some, but I think that there's a, you know, we have to work on our own trucks, but there's a need there for outside truck repair, and we think that we could expand on that business as well.
Good.
With its location there on US 50, you would think that would lend itself to the trucking as well. Just makes sense.
You know, we've done a thing in South Hutch, and we got the warehouse thing there, and we had looked at moving our shop over there, but man, that location, I've always been partial to that corner there. I started trucking there back in 1994, and I parked my truck right there and had my truck washed at that, that used to be the Doris Truck Wash. That's where I used to get it washed. So it's kind of partial to that corner. I think there that we have a good relationship with Dan over at the truck wash, and I think that it'll benefit his business as well if we can get more truck traffic coming in this way.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Appreciate it. Good work.
Congratulations on your success.
Congratulations, yeah.
A quick question. Do you have intentions for what you would do with your existing location? Would it stay the same?
Well, we're not really sure. We've got a lot of, lot of different irons in the fire there. We've, we signed a salt contract with, to take some specialized salt out to Denver, Colorado, and so we might use that as a place where we have to treat the salt.
Okay.
We also started storing canopies for seamen's. They're looking for somebody that does repairs. They have to take the repairs to Wichita right now to get repaired if they come in with damage. So there's a potential there that we could
Lot of potential.
Use that for just repairing some stuff for seamen's there. There's a lot of things that need to work, and we don't really know what we're going to do with it, but we'll know we'll do something with it.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's hope the city doesn't get in your way, and I don't think they are with the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Any other questions? Mr. Bauer, thank you, sir. Any other questions from counsel? Do we have a motion?
I would move to accept and approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the request to rezone 27.987 acres of land located to the west and south of 1701 East Blanchard Avenue, from C4 Special Commercial District and TA Transitional Agricultural Rural District to I2 Industrial District based on due consideration of the factors as shown. Adopt an ordinance for publication and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item.
Item eight B, consider 2016 moderate income housing grant application for Hampton East.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you much.
Good morning. Janet McCarron, Director of Planning and Development, and the item before you is application for a moderate income housing grant. Just a little bit of background, I'll just kind of walk you through the slides here if you want to work with me on the old school way. The Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, KHRC, offers moderate income housing grants to communities that are smaller than 60,000. The projects are income restricted to 120% of area median, area median, median income, which basically means you have to rent these to people who are in the qualifying income range. The city or a county can be the applicant, but the developer cannot, so that's why we're bringing this to you. We've been approached by Strong Construction and Heartland Housing Partners. They have a partnership, and they're working on the Hampton East project, and they're asking for MIH grants for a portion of Phase 1 of that project. The grant funds would be used to, as part of the construction, for 16 multifamily units. They're estimating the rent would be about $975 per month. They also, as part of Phase 1, will be building 24 duplex units, and that's total units, it'll be 12 structures, and 11 single-family units. The KHRC does offer MIH grants up to $400,000. The applicant's requesting the full amount. We'll see how they fare with that. On the next page, I show you, there's a location map showing you where Hampton East is located. So if you're familiar with the Plum Creek Elementary School, it's just to the east, and the apartments would actually be in this section closest to the school. Next page. The applicant's proposing to use RHID funding, which is another recent approval that City Council has granted as far as allowing for RHID funding. They have not specifically brought this project to you all because they're still working on some design for that, but they're going to use that for part of the infrastructure. They have started the plating process. That's not complete yet, but the deadline for the grant is this month, so we were hoping to get this through to you, and then they're going to finish up their planning approvals. The application does require a resolution of support from City Council, and you'll probably remember that we have another MIH grant right now that's currently open, and that's for the Town Homes at Santa Fe Place Project. That project was awarded $225,000 as part of the 2014 MIH. They have not spent any of that money yet. They've met with some delays, but if you've driven by there, you'll notice they do have the house demolished. They've got a revised budget, and the last update I had from the SHARA was that they were planning to meet with KHRC this month to work on the final bidding. So I think they're moving along. The applicant has also requested a waiver, which I didn't put in the motion, so we'll have to modify the motion. I do apologize for that. If, they're requesting a waiver of the building permit fee, the estimated amount would be $19,530.90, which doesn't really sound like an estimate, but just to give you an idea. And then RHID funding would also be requested, as I mentioned. Staff does recommend approval of the request. It's unclear, as I think I mentioned in my staff report, if this will have any effect on the other MIH grant. We have, the applicant has consulted the state, and the state said sure would be willing to entertain another grant application, and Jim Strawn and Ross Vogel, representing Heartland Partners and Strong Construction are here, and they can answer questions that I might not be able to.
Janet, I know that
We know a lot about Jim Strawn and your continued development projects, but the Heartland Group, would you mind introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
And how this partnership is structured?
Sure. Ross Vogel, 4740 Roanoke Parkway, Kansas City, Missouri. Yeah, what we're proposing here is what we've done in several communities on really similar projects. Garden City Liberal, we're getting ready to start it in Newton, and that's putting RHID, which I don't know if we had the same group, but I spoke about
I think we did.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Election between now and then. Spoke about RHID before, and now we're looking at moderate income housing. The reality is, in markets such as Hutch, you're not any different than any other community. I'm doing the same thing in North Platte, Nebraska. Unfortunately, they don't have this grant, but it's really hard to make these, make these opportunities work. A, your development cost is actually higher than it would be in more suburban, urban markets, and your rents are much lower, and you just have this gap there that can't be made up, and at the same time, you drive around a place like Hutchinson. In fact, our company has an apartment here, in one of your older apartments. There are not very good options, is what we found two years ago. We've been here for two years. We're doing projects in the area, not specifically here. And I think one of the unique things is what we do is, I try to look globally at your market, and one of the things I noticed is you had Inverness that came in, and I think they did a great job, but they did almost all one-bedroom apartments. So this is not seen, signed, or inked, or anything, but we went to the management in Inverness and said, why don't you also manage this project? Because what we're doing is, we're offering one-bedrooms at Inverness. Our two-bedrooms, our 16-unit apartment complex will be all two-bedrooms. So you hit another price point there and another need point there. Our duplex will be a two and three bedrooms, but a majority three bedrooms. So we're trying to hit across the market, managed by the same people, a little different name between Inverness and this project, but be somewhat seamless when somebody comes to the community or someone wants to move in the community. I think the lease rates for your duplex project, we're looking at about 1,300 for your three-bedroom, 1,150 for two-bedroom, 975 for the two-bedroom apartment, and then I think they're kind of at 775, somewhere in there. So we're hitting across that spectrum of market rate apartments. The other thing I want to be clear on is, this is really a 40-unit project, plus single-family homes. We are requesting 16 units. That gives us flexibility to That gives us flexibility to be able to meet that median family income guideline range. Um, I, I have had it once before where it became real confusion, "Oh, this is, uh, low-income housing." It is by no means low-income housing. Um, this is the tool that the state has, has, uh, figured out to give communities to make moderate income housing work, and, um, that, that gap is quite high, at 120. One person in the household, it's $70,000. Four people in the household, it's $100,000. And that's only 16 of the 40 units. So we'll fall well within finding, uh, plenty of renters within that, within, that will fall within that range. Um, this is a really good, strong application. I've, I've been successful at getting these before, and there's other, this almost really similar setup. RHID, in fact, it asked about, are, are you using RHID in the application? RHID combined with this to try to make these projects work, but I, as I say, we've, you know, I think it was over a year that I stood in front of you, and we don't have anything yet because it's really difficult to do. And, and that doesn't have to do with design. That has as much to do with trying to finance things and, and have investors and, like Jim and I, have, have confidence in your market to believe that we can get these rents.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Appreciate, uh, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Glad to have you back here. You've joined partnership with Mr. Strawn. Uh, I certainly support, uh, what you're proposing here, but I do have a question relating to, and this may come later, I don't want to, I don't want to delay this at all, but, uh, in terms of thinking long-term, in terms of, of 43rd Street, will we need to be doing a traffic study or some analysis of, uh, what the future of 43rd Street will be in terms of ingress, egress, and traffic flows and so on?
I, you know, we
Development out there in the school?
We had that conversation when the, when the school was built.
Right.
And of course, part of that turned into some turn lanes that, that were, uh, were built there. Was there a traffic stu-, I don't know if there was a traffic study done on this, this project, but, uh,
It may be required.
It may be required, Jim? As we go through the process, yeah.
Okay, well, just, uh, we all want to keep that in mind because of that, uh,
Yeah, 43rd.
Development, uh, that is occurring out there, which is wonderful.
43rd, really, I mean, it's, it's got a lot of issues from Plum all the way to, to Third, I mean, we've got a lot of
Okay.
Issues there where we've grown out to that, and it's still just a rural two-lane, you know, uh,
No curb gutters.
Open ditch, and, um,
Not designed for urban
No. At some point in time, there's gonna be that, that issue that we've got to deal with.
I don't want to delay that, but, uh, we, we may have to start that, that study process, right? Any other questions from council? Mr. Vogel or Mr. Strawn?
Just a few clarifications. I'm really excited to see something like this. It's definitely something that our housing needs assessment has, has shown that we need in, in more of that median income range. Just a clarification, it's already zoned to do just this, right? We're, okay.
It is zone R4, which is moderate, um, no, that's our residential neighborhood conservation district, which is basically somewhere between moderate and high density. So, you, you can do apartments in this zone with a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Um, the duplexes, yes, you can do, those are permitted by Rite as well as single-family homes. So they'll need to get a conditional use permit as part of the apartment project.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. I've been contacted by about half a dozen people with mostly safety concerns on the, on the road issue, which I think is completely separate from this development. Um, but some were just of the, of the opinion that they didn't want to see development next to them. But everybody wants growth, but not in their neighborhood.
Yeah, and I think, we got contacted in, in our office, um, as well, and the person who came to us was probably less close to half a mile away. This would not abut them whatsoever, so I'm, I'm not really sure. I just think, you know, it, it, there are some traffic concerns up there. And so people just want to make sure that, you know, we plan appropriately.
Yes. I don't want to converge the two items because I'm not sure that that's necessarily the developer's responsibility. But I do think we, we can't put that conversation off much longer. John, remind us, is, does the county still own the north side of 43rd?
Parts. I can't tell you which parts, but it zigzags in and out.
So that's part of the complexity in that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the fact that when new schools are built, they're built
Right.
In areas that don't have proper infrastructure, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for them?
All right, any other questions, uh, from council? Keep on, keep on going. So, uh, may I, we have a motion then?
I would move to accept and approve the request of Strong Construction and Heartland Housing Partners for submission of a 2016 moderate income housing grant application to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for construction of 16 moderate income housing units as part of the Phase One development of Hampton East, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution and grant application.
We also need to address the
Need to add, add the building permit fees, authorization, Jade?
Well, I, I was under the impression that we never waive those.
Well, we did waive them for, um,
For Town Homes at Santa Fe.
Town Homes at Santa Fe Place. I did double-check that, so that's up to you guys if you want to do that.
So are we just setting that
It's typically been considered part of our community match, if you will.
Okay.
Not a requirement, but it, it shows, I think, to the state that, you know, we're interested in this project, and that's, that's what we did on the Santa Fe homes. Plus, we did some additional gap financing for them beyond the building permit fees that isn't happening here, so.
It's all about leveraging.
With, um, the waiver, to include the waiver of building permit fees.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Hiros de Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item.
Item 8C, consider bids for Fire Station Number Five Construction Project.
Morning, Chief.
Morning, Chief.
Haven't seen you in a while.
It's been a while.
Have a good summer?
With all the rain, we've been
Yeah, that's right.
Enjoying that as far as the wild and fire season.
I bet that suppresses that quite a bit, doesn't it? Absolutely.
Pressure off, so we appreciate that. I'm, uh, Kim Forbes, Fire Chief. Uh, we're here to talk to you today about, uh, Fire Station Number Five's project. On, uh, September the 15th, we had a bid opening, uh, for that project. We had seven, uh, general contractors present. Nun's Construction had the low bid. There's, uh, $1,330,000 that's been bonded, uh, for the, the new, uh, Fire Station's project. And Nun's Construction come in at $1,258,346. So it's our recommendation that we accept that bid and, uh, move forward with that, with that project.
Can you review, Chief, again, the timeframe of the project?
Right.
Construction and so on.
We hope that, give or take, a, a couple of days from October the 12th, that we'll be in a, uh, position to do demolition on the fire station, the current fire station that's at 11th and Hendricks. My guess is that'll take a couple of weeks, knock the building down, uh, do the prep work for the, the, uh, soil, uh, compaction and things of that nature. So, probably by the first of November, they would be able to actually start construction then at that site. And I think somewhere in the neighborhood of five months from the, from the time they actually start construction, it should be completed. Obviously, we're going into a, uh, winter season, so some of that'll be affected by whatever, snow or whatever that we get, so, but that's a general, uh, plan anyway. Uh, in the next couple of days, we'll have a, kind of a planning meeting, uh, if, if we accept this with Nun's, to help set those target dates, uh, but that's kind of what we've got on our plan.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Uh, with regards to the, uh, amount of bids, is that, uh, higher or lower than on the previous, the seven contractors? Seems like a good, a fair amount.
Yes, it is, uh, a little bit higher.
Good.
Uh, but the reason for this is, well, there's two. Uh, one, this is a, a larger site, so it has, uh, an additional, uh, concrete pad to it for maneuver, uh, of the fire trucks.
Sure.
So that contract, uh, uh, amount for the concrete added to it. And then a local contractor for the, uh, like the masonry work and stuff, didn't bid on this project, so that increased the, the cost from the, from the masonry and stuff. So, put both of those together, and that's the reason why it's, it's, uh, higher than the current fire station that we're building.
Oh, okay. I was just impressed that there were seven, uh, there was competition involved in
I, I, I think the last time, we had maybe four contractors bid, so a lot of interest in
Good.
Probably just to sign a times right now, so.
Good, good, good.
We had several of them that were from out of town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't recognize some of them.
Yeah, so, the, the, we were more than satisfied with the seven contractors that come in, so.
And it came in below the bonded amount as well.
Yeah.
So that's great.
It's below the amount, but it is a bit higher
Than originally anticipated.
Yeah, and, uh, this is the same floor plan as the current station, so we learned, we had a couple of change orders, so we combined that into it, so, uh, by doing that, then hopefully that'll eliminate some of the change orders for the, the construction. I think that also reflects in a little bit of a higher price than what the, the current station is, but. I might share too, that tomorrow, we've been waiting for several weeks for, uh, internet service to be hooked up to the, to the current station, so that has been completed, so tomorrow we'll actually make the move into the new station, so.
How wonderful.
Great.
Very good.
All right, any other questions from council? Entertain a motion then.
Uh, I'll move to approve awarding the construction project to Nun's Construction for $1,258,346.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Hiros de Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item.
Item 8D, consider bids for Fire Station Number Five Consulting Engineering and Special Inspection Services.
And then, I'm Kim Forbes, Fire Chief. Again, this, uh, this project is a requirement, uh, that meets the needs of the building code, requiring a special, uh, third-party inspection service that would monitor various parts of the construction, uh, the, the ground preparation, uh, concrete work, uh, steel, uh, fasteners, uh, materials and things of that nature. So on September the 28th, uh, we had a, uh, the bids were turned in to the Fire Department at the Command Center. Uh, we opened the bids. Uh, there were four engineering firms that provided, uh, bids to us. Uh, the, the low bid was, uh, Intertec PSI. Again, there's, uh, a million 330,000 that's been bonded for this project. This is part of that expense, uh, for the, the overall project. Uh, Intertec PSI was the low bidder, and it's our recommendation to accept their bid at $10,040. And that's, uh, fairly close, within a couple of thousand dollars of what we had for the, the special inspection services for the current fire station that was built, so.
Okay.
And, and again, uh, these four, uh, are from outside our area, so we've, we've had firms that, uh, overall, they're represented in several communities. It's from Kansas City, uh, Wichita, Slineup, and, and around the mid, uh, uh, part of the state of Kansas and stuff, as far as what their service areas are, so.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Questions from council? Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve awarding the Consulting Engineering and Special Inspection Services contract to Intertec PSI for $10,040, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Hiros de Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item, please. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8E, consider gateway streetlight project for Airport Road and K-61.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Merrill Dye, the Assistant City Manager. The 2016 capital improvement program for, um, for this year includes two LED streetlight projects. One would be along Airport Road from Fourth Avenue to Highway 50, and the other would be on K-61 from Avenue G to Highway 50. The city's cost for these installations involves an upfront payment to Westar Energy for secondary risers, relays, pedestals, and galvanized breakaway bases. Also, we would have trenching and boring costs of about, uh, 100,000 dol-, I'm sorry, of about 9,700, uh, feet for the conduit and duct. So the cost for each of these projects runs about $100,000 each. Uh, you have a detailed breakdown attached to your cover memo in the packet. The cost for these projects was to come out of Charter Ordinance Number 46, the, uh, Charter Ordinance that you dealt with earlier. We had a couple of issues come up with that. First, the Charter Ordinance didn't cover streetlights, and even if we could have included streetlights, um, under the revisions that you considered today, um, our bond counsel has told us that these costs would not be eligible under the bonds because in the end, the city will not own the streetlights. We will continue to lease them from Westar. We were to have started these projects in September of this year. We put them on hold with Westar, and so they haven't, um, begun to order the materials. We wanted to bring these, um, projects to your attention so we could consider the options on how to fund these projects. So, um, first of all, uh, we have the option of funding both projects out of the general fund reserves for 2016, which would be a couple hundred thousand dollars. Or fund them out of the general fund reserves for 2017. Or just fund one project each year for 2016, and again, for 2017. Again, out of the general fund, uh, reserves. Staff is recommending that we fund the K-61 project for 2016 out of general fund reserves. And the reason I'm suggesting K-61 is because Westar has already made a major investment in LED lighting over the bi-duct of K-61 from, you know, north of Avenue G up to Lorraine. And that investment was over $500,000, I think it was around $550,000. Um, the, the other, uh, reason is that we have a gateway sign planned for 2017, and it would be my recommendation that we place, uh, a gateway sign, uh, replace the one that's there on K-61, so that we have just a nice welcome mat into our community all along that corridor of K-61. The Airport Road, the city, um, or Airport Road up to Avenue G is within city limits, and then south of G, uh, to Highway 50 is in the county. So, to do a streetlight project or even a gateway sign there, we're gonna have to have some discussions with the county, um, for their permission. So really, K-61 is an easier option if we want to proceed this year. So that is staff's recommendation to fund the K-61 project for LED streetlight installations from Avenue G south to 50 for this year, using general fund reserves. Any questions?
Well, I appreciate the explanation. This, I think, helps us all understand, uh, why we're approaching it i- in this manner. If I recall, I think we began this discussion back in 2014 in the budget process, and, uh, so we are making progress, I'm sure, and which is, uh, encouraging, and we appreciate we are making progress, I'm sure, and which is encouraging, and we appreciate the council's consideration and openness to this. But I think it's really an important next step in terms of improving our gateway entrances to the community.
Yeah.
That's one of the goals that we establish as a council, and so I think we're consistent with that, so hopefully council will see it as well.
Now, Merrill, are these wood? I noticed they say galvanized.
No, these would be steel.
But we could probably, we could probably save some money if we did wood, right? Right, Merrill?
May I have a motion here?
Oh, goodness.
Oh, thank you, Jade.
I would move to approve staff's recommendation to fund the K-61 LED streetlight installation project out of 2016 general fund reserves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Hyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 9, report of city officials.
All right. Nancy, do you have anything this morning?
No, I certainly don't.
Nancy, how about you, Jade?
Just a quick question about the townhomes at Santa Fe Project. Are we at risk of having those funds pulled? And do you personally think that they will affect our ability to get moderate-income funds in the future? And is there anything that we can do to help our relationship with KHRC or help New Beginnings? I think that's going to be a great project if, if it gets off the ground, if it ever, if it ever comes to fruition. But do we think we're going to lose those funds?
I, you know, I, I don't. I think, you know, recent updates indicate that things are moving forward. As I said, the house was tore down and purchased and kind of re-looking at budget and new bids. But I would think if, between now and the time these, this last application's reviewed, if, if progress hadn't been made, it could have some impact on having an open grant in one community. And so we're going to do everything we can, and I think we have in trying to kind of move that project along. It seems like it's had a, an extended life beyond what we ever expected. So we'll continue to communicate with, with New Beginnings and what we can do to move forward. But I think the latest update we heard this morning was working with the Department of Commerce on the new, or housing on the, the new bids, so.
Is there a drop-dead date by the state agencies?
Well, I think the, it's a matter of how much patience people have.
I see.
You know, we've had a lot of communications, I know I have personally, with the director, and, you know, they, they've done a lot of work in Hutchinson. They like what Hutchinson's done with housing projects that they've funded in the past. And so I think that reputation probably helps a little bit in, in extending their patience level, so.
Great. Thank you, John. And John.
Anything else?
Nothing to report.
Dave, anything? Don't have anything. Mr. Dirdoff?
Just a couple of things. Just wanted to formally announce, and I think the council's aware of this, but after 40 years of dedicated service to the Hutchinson Fire Department and 13 years as our fire chief, Chief Forbes has announced his retirement effective November 25th of 2016. And, you know, Chief's just really a great example of what hard work and dedication to your trade can do. You know, starting with our fire department, I believe, back in 1976, does that sound about right? As a entry-level firefighter and working his way over the last 40 years to be our chief, which position he's held for the past 13 years. And so extremely proud of the work Kim has done, at least working with me and moving our department forward. You know, we, we've made a lot of progress over the last 10 years in terms of equipment upgrades, where I think we were deferring some maintenance, and as just agenda item of day, we continue to improve our, our firehouse structure, so a lot of hard work there, so. And I would just say that we plan to do an open search. This project will start immediately, and we'll have an interim chief announced here in the next few days. But my goal is to hopefully have a, a new fire chief selected by, by the end of the year, and we'll see how that process goes. But I think it'll be a, a position that has a lot of interest because of where the fire department is today, and a lot of that's credited to Chief Forbes. So want to wish him the best. He's still here for, for another couple of months, so you'll probably see him. But we'll, we'll talk more about that as his last day approaches, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, I don't-
Service.
Congratulations, Chief. Is there a way that you could extend that out a couple of years to get this next fire station built? Would you consider that, Chief?
I'll consider it for just a short time.
Well, I would, for one, echo Mr. Dirdoff's comments. I've worked with the chief for many, many years, and your professionalism is, is just exemplary. And on various projects that you and I worked on together, you were always open and receptive and were never, were open-minded to the options that we had. So from a personal standpoint, we really appreciate your wonderful service to the city of Hutchinson and wish you the best.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Definitely. Agreed.
I remember Kim from when he used to come to the District Media Center to laminate[1730.73]